Please have a roll call.
Commissioner Tedesco.
Here.
Commissioner Pinter.
Here.
Commissioner Baca.
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
I ask that everyone please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with one? Chaz, do you want to make that motion to approve the agenda with a modification?
You want to do that during consent?
Okay, we're going to move to approve the agenda as written with an expectation that a consent calendar will be modified. Right?
Which item? During consent. So we're just going to approve the agenda?
Yep, just approve the agenda.
Are you making the motion, Commissioner Tedesco?
Move to approve the agenda for Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023, 9:30 a.m.
Second.
A motion and a second. Okay, moving on to awards and presentations. Good morning. We could begin today by recognizing Foster Care Month. This is held annually in May, and this is a time dedicated to raising awareness about the critical need for foster care and celebrating the invaluable contributions of foster parents, social workers, and communities in supporting vulnerable children and families. At this time, Commissioner Tedesco will read the proclamation.
Good morning. So proclamation, Foster Care Month, May 2023. Whereas Foster Care Awareness Month is celebrated nationally to raise awareness about foster care, to highlight that foster care is a means of support to families and not a substitute for parents, and to encourage more community involvement as foster families, volunteers, or mentors. And whereas childhood is a time of laughter and play, it is a time of curiosity and wonder. It is a time for making friends, learning, and exploring the world around them. Children who feel safe, secure, and loved can grow strong and confident. But for almost 4,500 of Colorado's children, this image of happy childhood does not exist. These children experience... These children's experience is often of sadness and pain, fear and loss. It is separation from family, friends, community, and sometimes their pets. They cannot remain with their birth families through no fault of their own. These children need temporary families to help them feel safe and secure, a place to heal from the trauma they have experienced. And whereas in 1988, May was declared Foster Care Month to raise awareness of foster care and celebrate the honor and honor foster families and the foster care community. And whereas foster parents play a unique role with birth families, they fill in to support Adams County birth families who need time to overcome challenges and time to be whole again. And whereas we want to thank and highlight the large and diverse community of nonprofit organizations, businesses, civics groups, public servants, and individuals who are committed to the cause of caring for and raising awareness of the needs of children and youth in foster care. And whereas the Adams County Human Services Agency understands that children are the key to Colorado's future success and prosperity. And whereas Colorado is experiencing a shortage of foster families, Colorado needs more families willing to provide care for children and youth with complex behavioral and mental health needs so that they can live in family settings and not congregate care settings, and to provide care for sibling groups so they can remain together as they move through this challenging time in their life. And whereas Adams County has many wonderful foster families, but we still need more. And there is no better month to begin the process of becoming a foster parent than May, National Foster Care Month. And whereas the Adams County Board of County Commissioners recognizes the vital role of foster parents play in the lives of children and youth in foster care, and the roles caseworkers and the community play in shaping the lives of children and youth in foster care. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado, proclaims May 2023 as Foster Care Month, signed by the entire Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Tedesco. At this time, I would like to ask Eddie Valdez, Carrie Daggett, our Deputy Directors for Human Services, and Ellen Sandoval, our Client Services Manager, to come to the podium. All right, thank you.
I'm Susan Townsend. This is Ellen Sandoval, but I'm reading.
Oh, sounds good.
We're representing the foster care program, so thank you, commissioners, for letting us speak. Thank you for this proclamation declaring May as National Foster Care Month. This year's theme of strengthening minds, uplifting families, highlights the need for culturally responsive, holistic, trembling-form treatment for all children entering foster care. According to the most recent data from the Children's Bureau, the number of children in foster care nationwide hovers around 390,000. The children and youth who enter foster care in Adams County are not safe in their own homes and do not have kin who can care for them. They have challenging mental, physical, and behavioral health needs, needs that our Adams County foster parents admirably meet each and every day. We cannot do what we do every day without them. Foster parenting is truly not for the faint of heart. Our foster parents successfully navigate a myriad of systems in order to advocate for the children and their care, and they never stop advocating even when things get hard. We are grateful to each and every Adams County foster parent who has given tirelessly, selflessly, and selflessly to provide a stable nurturing environment where children can heal. So thank you, commissioners, for this proclamation which raises awareness of the issues faced by children and youth in foster care and acknowledges the dedication of our foster parents.
Thank you very much. Do we have any commissioners that have comments? Commissioner Tedesco.
I just want to say thank you. You know, I think a lot of the things that you've been doing this month have been overlooked. You know, we had the Foster Care 5K. We had some other events, and we had some nonprofits raising money this month. You guys do some outstanding work, and you have to live by some of these laws that are being passed and implement those laws. And I don't think a lot of people understand how hard that is to do with the kids and the families that you're representing. From myself, I just want to say thank you because you are appreciated in all that you do.
Thank you, Commissioner Tedesco. Anyone else? I think we all appreciate everything that you do. If you guys would have a seat, we'll take a photo with you after we get through this next one. Thank you very much for all you do in our community and helping those families and kids. Next up, we also recognize National Public Works Week. At a time that... This is a time to honor and appreciate the essential role that public works professionals play in maintaining and enhancing the quality of life in our communities. From roads and bridges to water treatment plants and public buildings, public works professionals contribute their expertise and skills to ensure the safety, the efficiency, and the sustainability of our vital public systems. This time we would ask, which commissioner is going to read the proclamation? Commissioner Pinter, please read the proclamation.
All right, this is National Public Works Week, May 21 through 27, 2023. Whereas National Public Works Week is an opportunity to recognize the dedicated professionals who work tirelessly to provide essential public services and infrastructure to our communities. And whereas the public work professionals play a critical role in maintaining our roads, bridges, water systems, public buildings, and other essential infrastructure that support our daily lives. And whereas these professionals work around the clock, often in difficult and hazardous conditions to keep our community safe, clean, and functioning smoothly. And whereas National Public Works Week provides an opportunity to raise awareness about the important contributions of public works professionals and the importance of investing in our infrastructure. And whereas the National Public Works Week is celebrated annually during the third week of May to coincide with the birthday of John F. Kennedy, who championed the importance of public works and infrastructure during his presidency. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado, do proclaim the week of May 21 through 27, 2023, as National Public Works Week. With special recognition and appreciation for the team behind our 60 million annual operations and maintenance programming for delivering an agency record of $30.2 million in capital program spending in 2022, we urge all residents to celebrate the achievements of this outstanding team and promote the importance of investing in our infrastructure for the benefit of our communities and our nation, and is signed by all of us.
Thank you, Commissioner Pinter. Brian Staley, our Public Works Director, please come on down.
Thank you for having us this morning. Today we're gathered to celebrate and honor a group of individuals who often go unnoticed but play an indispensable role in shaping our communities. It's my great pleasure to address you all for National Public Works Week as we extend our heartfelt gratitude to our exceptional public works professionals. Our communities are vibrant, functional spaces where we live, work, and thrive. Behind the scenes stand our dedicated group of public works professionals who ensure the smooth operation, maintenance, and improvement of our transportation and drainage infrastructure. To the members of our design team, we owe a debt of gratitude for their visionary thinking and meticulous planning. These individuals possess a remarkable ability to transform ideas and concepts into reality, designing bridges that connect communities and roads that allow us to reach our destinations. Equally deserving of recognition are our construction contractors, the internal inspection team, and our stormwater utility team, who oversee the implementation of these designs with unwavering attention to detail. Their vigilance and commitment are instrumental in guaranteeing that our infrastructure projects are not only functional, but also built to withstand the test of time. Our operations group deserves our utmost appreciation for their tireless efforts in maintaining and managing our public works. They are the unsung heroes who keep our roads clear and stormwater pipes and ditches flowing. Their dedication is evident every time we see a street promptly plowed or a pothole swiftly repaired. As we reflect on the individual contributions made by our public works team members, I'd like to recognize their immense dedication, professionalism, and resilience. Their work may be taken for granted by some, but we recognize that they are the driving force behind the infrastructure that shapes our lives. Please take a moment during this National Public Works Week to express your gratitude to our team members. Let them know how much their hard work and unwavering commitment mean to you, your family, and our entire community. And to our public works team, I extend my deepest thanks and appreciation. Your dedication to public service is commendable and expertise is vital to our community's prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have anyone that'd like to speak? Commissioner Pinter, then Commissioner Tedesco.
Yeah, thank you so much, and thank you to all of our public works professionals who are in the room today. I see many of you in your brightly colored blue shirts, but I know it's a vast team within Adams County. When the rest of us are told to stay home because the roads are dangerous, the storm has made it so, or conditions are bad, or something needs to be repaired, you are the ones who go out and make sure that the rest of us are safe. And that's not lost on me. And having spent some time in local government, every time we have a major storm event, I am grateful for you and think of you out there working for all of us and your peers in public works in our various municipalities, as well as at CDOT. And the day-in and day-out work in the heat of the sun, and the wind, and everything you do to make sure that our roads are repaired, as well as all the other functions of public works that are the invisible glue that hold our community together. Honestly, if you look, not to wax poetic, but if you look back at history, roads are the first common agreement that we all had to come together in community, and your ability to keep us connected through high-quality roadways is the very fabric of what it means to have a community that's connected. So thank you for your work, and thank you for being so diligent and taking care of the rest of us.
Commissioner Tedesco.
Thank you. So I just want to say this. You know, I've been here for quite a while now, and in 2013, we had storms hit Adams County, and this department was exemplary. They stood up, they did what they had to do, they helped move people, livestock, animals, whatever it took. And you guys showed who you are in that time. And just recently, with unprecedented rain that we've had and the closure of so many roads, over 30 roads, and trying to keep people safe and keep access for those that needed access to their homes and to their loved ones, and for medical needs and for other needs. You guys show what it is to be Adams County. You guys prove what it is to be a department that works together for the betterment of our community. And for that, I applaud you. Could I have all the public service workers please stand up? Thank you very much.
Well, this will be a fun photo in a couple minutes, won't it? Commissioner Baca.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, everyone, to our Public Works Department. You know, it seems just like yesterday that I was at your snow and ice luncheon at your new facility, and it's been a really, really long winter, and it's shaping up to be a really interesting spring with all the rain and the recent flooding and the washout of some of our roads and roadways. I can't thank you enough. You know, I had some of our school districts reach out, and thank you for getting our schoolchildren to school safely so they didn't have to cancel school, and to our families for their schoolchildren to be able to make it to school, and for our emergency personnel to, you know, drive the roads, know which roads are closed. I think that the team effort, not only from public works, but you are supported by many. We have finance, we have purchasing, we have county administration, the grant writers, we had an update from the grant people, all of the planning and design work that goes into place for public works and infrastructure. I just spoke at a municipal event last weekend, and what I was explaining to the audience is that the minute you walk out the door, that you, you as a community member, as a resident, you are affected by what happens the minute you step out onto the sidewalk, get in your car, and you drive down the street. And you don't know, as a resident, if you are on a city street, a county roadway, a state highway system, and that's really how it should be. But we know here in the county, we hear feedback from residents all the time. And I was in a meeting recently with Janet Lundquist and Commissioner Odoricio. We get a monthly update on transportation projects around the county. And in that meeting, it was the day that the roadways were being washed out. And in real time, Janet and the public works team were interacting. You were sending in information to Janet which roadways were closed, which roadways were having challenges with flooding and being washed out. And in real time, she was communicating that to our communications department to get it out to our residents and to the media. So I can't thank you enough for all that you do. You are the face of Adams County. When I was in city government, the face of the city government, a lot of times, is the sheriff's department or the police department at municipal. It still is here, but there's so many that are public-facing, and public works is one of them. Even though you may not encounter a resident, you impact our residents every single day. I appreciate your loyalty and for showing up and your dedication to your profession. I just need to announce, we are hitting a major milestone, and I don't want to take any thunder away from Commissioner Odoricio. But tomorrow, we have the York Street pedestrian underpass. It is a highly traveled roadway. It's an art installation project at York Street. And I just want to thank all that were involved in that project to make that roadway safer for pedestrians and to beautify that portion of Adams County. It's been a long time coming, and I just thank you so much for all that you do for us every day.
Thank you, Commissioner Baca. I also want to thank you all for your help this weekend during the neighborhood cleanup. It was outstanding. Over 100-some cars were of junk. Trucks and cars brought their stuff. It was junk, it was yard work, you know. All that stuff was either going to stay in people's yards or go into the ditches. And so I appreciate all the work that you guys did on a Saturday to help keep our community clean and safe. At this time, we're going to go down front. We're going to start with the foster care folks. If you could join us down front for a photo, and we'll present to you and do a photo with the proclamation. And then as soon as we're done with that photo, we've got to figure out how to get all of the public works folks in here to get in here. And I would recommend, when that photo happens, that we have folks come upstairs and we do, like, multi-level. All right? All right, standing on each side.
Yep.
It's not going to be in the picture, just so you know.
Come on, just make this look better.
No, 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 no. I'm out of here as soon as y'all get my head.
You're so high. You're so high. You're so high. Go Nuggets. Should we do arms in the front, arms in the back, arms down front, top up, ease?
Twenty years.
Crystal, get your burrito.
It's on the table.
Oh, yeah, get your burrito. Yeah.
No, I don't need to have a picture of me eating.
No? Okay, okay. Okay, keep on. We've got plenty of room here. Keep on coming down. No one else is sitting. You're just sitting. Crystal takes control. I'm not, I'm not sitting. You can sit. I'm not sitting.
Be like senior.
Thank you. This is...
That makes me responsible.
Thank you. Thank you. That's exactly my point.
But it was fun when we got to practice the public caring thing. Long story. I don't know that we can...
Your big muscular arm is blocking for me.
Would you rather, would you be rather be five foot eight?
Oh, wait, okay, here we go. Here we go.
Pictures coming, pictures here.
Need some help?
Yes.
We're still sliding down. Yeah, slide down, slide down.
Here it goes, here it goes, here it goes.
Here we go, here we go. Slide, okay. Here we go. Here we go. Look this way. Woo-hoo! We got it done. How do you coordinate 85 people?
Someone's going to say, "This isn't even the entire team."
I usually hear it against them.
On the head?
Yes.
Did you hide from that photo?
I knelt down. Yes, I did. Yep.
Whatever. The Broncos and the Rockies are going to get...
Okay, team. Thank you all very much. That was great. At this point, we go to public comment. Is there anyone signed up for the public that wishes to speak?
There is not.
Is there anyone that did not sign up but would still like to speak? You have up to three minutes. And none. Back to the board. Any comments from the Board of County Commissioners? Seeing none there. Moving on to consent calendar. And Chaz.
I'd like to move that we accept the consent calendar with one item, Item E, being removed to put into county manager.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Vote? All right, and that passes. So county manager, you have four items, one through three, and then we move Section 6E down to be number four for new business, okay? All right, it's all yours, sir.
Good morning. The first item is a human services agreement. We have a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Reaching Hope in the amount of $300,000 for crisis services for the Adams County Human Service Department, Agreement Number 2023.429. And Eddie Valdez will present the item.
Good morning, commissioners. So in early 2021, the Adams County Human Services Department developed a virtual mental health services program for crisis services for our employees' experienced hardships while going through the pandemic. This service, this self-care service for our human services team members was so well-received, we decided to continue offering these services through the year 2022 and now into early 2023. Human services members have greatly benefited from this self-care service and continue to utilize this resource at a high rate department-wide. These sessions are defined as virtual mental health services via telehealth and are 45-minute in length with an option to schedule more time as needed to adequately address the needs of the individual. These sessions can also be individual or group sessions. So a lot of our team members, our teams, have taken the opportunity to bring Reaching Hope in to team meetings, to to multi-discussions. So in calendar year 2022, Reaching Hope served 56 individuals for a total of 898 sessions, including 49 group sessions. So that's about one in every 15 staff members have utilized the service in 2022. So far in calendar year 2023, Reaching Hope has served 50 individuals for a total of 802 sessions, including 15 group sessions. The Human Services Department is requesting to continue providing crisis services through Reaching Hope to our team members through the end of this year, so through the end of 2023. With this, we're requesting the approval of $300,000 for this necessary self-care service. This contract will continue to be funded with the Social Services Fund or Fund 15. Any questions?
Any questions or motion from the board?
I make a motion to approve, as presented.
Motion to approve, and a second?
Second.
And we'll vote. Thank you very much.
These next two items are related with facilities, and Cindy Stringham will present them. We have a resolution approving an agreement, Amendment 4, I'm sorry, to the agreement between Adams County and Roth Shepherd Architects LLC in the amount of $1,64,240 for the Coroner's Facility Improvements, Amendment 2023.139.
Good morning, commissioners. Cindy Stringham, manager of planning, design, and construction with Facilities and Fleet Management. The Coroner and probation building renovation project began construction in 2021 and experienced commodity delays along the way, but now has a current completion set for this summer. Although the planning for the project determined overall efficiencies to renovate the existing facility, discoveries during construction of site defects or noncompliant items resulted in some increased scope to remedy the issues. This caused the need for some redesign work and added construction administration by the architect. Therefore, it is recommended to approve Amendment 4 to the agreement with Roth Shepherd Architects LLC. with Roth Shepherd Architects LLC in the amount of $164,240. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? Okay, do we have a motion?
Move to approve as presented.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. We'll vote. And that passes. Thank you very much.
And finally, well, for now, we have the amendment is for the resolution approving Amendment Two to the agreement between Adams County and Saunders Construction Incorporated in the amount of $650,733 for additional construction services for the Coroner and Probation Facility renovation, Amendment 2023.142.
As just noted, the commodity delays and unforeseen issues impacted construction scope and timeline. The work for site drainage, roof slope tie-in, irrigation modifications, exterior cladding nonconformance, and autopsy suite subgrade soils caused the increased scope of work and extended general conditions. Therefore, it is recommended to approve Amendment Two to the agreement with Saunders Construction, Inc., in the amount of $650,733. Are there any questions?
So, the $650,000, that seems like a lot of money. If you could explain a little bit more. You said it was because of the delays. Give it a little more detail, please.
Yes. I have a lot of documentation on that. And it's over, over the time, there was used contingencies. So, it was, so it is needing more money. I have a lot of backup. I could send you all of the information that, that consisted of. General conditions, though, was an extended six months of, yes, which was the big thing, which was driven by the commodity delays. And I don't know, I can tell you, I've got all the information. I'd be happy to send it to you. Pages of documentation of all the amounts. Need more information now?
I guess my question is, I would like to follow up afterwards. I'm not gonna stop this from proceeding. I understand the commodity delays, but I'd like to learn more about it. If any other Commissioners have that question, they could talk to the county manager as well. But if you could share that information with county manager, I'll obtain it. I just want to understand if there's also things that we could do in the future, knowing that there's an expectation of commodity delays, there's an expectation of the environment that we're in. Do we need to, what can we do to try not to be surprised by these things? And so, that may not be a question that you can answer off, but that's a question I'll follow up with the county manager on. And if any other folks are curious, they can either join us or ask the county manager himself. All right, do we have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
All right, we have a motion. And second. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last item, the Brighton graffiti cleanup.
Yeah, Commissioners, for item E, I'll be inviting Beth Torgensen and Matt Rivera with Community Safety and Well-being to speak more on, on the partnership we have with City of Brighton. Item E is a resolution approving an interlocal agreement between the City of Brighton and Adams County for graffiti cleanup services.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for having us. Today, we're here to talk about expanding our graffiti program into Brighton. It's an effort to continue to be regionally responsible and responsive, so we thank you for your support. I'll turn it over to Beth and team.
Good morning, Commissioners. In 2015, to address graffiti in unincorporated Adams County, we started the Adams County Graffiti Removal Program. The program initially focused on providing graffiti removal services to commercial and residential constituents without issuing code violations. However, as the community grew, the program expanded to include a seasonal initiative to hire individuals with lived experience, specifically those experiencing homelessness, to address graffiti. The program also expanded to include county public spaces, parks, and trails at that time. For continued efforts, like Matt said, to address ongoing graffiti in surrounding areas within Adams County, Community Safety and Well-being proposed a regional and collaborative approach partnering with neighboring jurisdictions, CDOT, and the railroads. Brighton and Adams County mutually desire to enter into an intergovernmental agreement for Adams County to operate its graffiti program within the City of Brighton. The county would support graffiti cleanup and patrol services up to 20 hours a month for the first two months of the season and 15 hours a month thereafter, generally occurring between the months of April and October. We also entered into an intergovernmental agreement with Federal Heights and began service last week and have already removed 90 graffiti cases. The City of Brighton City Council heard and approved the intergovernmental agreement on April 20, 2023. Community Safety and Well-being is recommending the approval of the intergovernmental agreement between Adams County and the City of Brighton for graffiti services, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Tedesco.
Thank you. And I do want to say thank you for all that you've done, and this has been an ongoing program, and it's been quite unique, and we've had the ability to hire some new people and produce, make jobs available that weren't available before, while also contributing to our community. I sit on E470 on the board, and I know that when this graffiti program came up, they were looking at it as, you know, our roadway crosses a lot of Adams County's roadways, and can we partner? And they partnered with your group as well to take care of those bridges and underpasses. And you guys have done a tremendous job. And from the E470 board, we want to say thank you. From Adams County, I just want to say thank you. I've seen some of the work that you've done and the timeliness that you've done it. And I've seen him on the side of the road. So, I do want to appreciate, you know, just express my appreciation for all that you're doing. It's definitely making an impact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Commissioner Pinter.
Yes. Thank you so much. We are also trying to figure out technology, so I apologize for the momentary delay. Thank you so much. This is something that adds a lot of vibrancy and shows a lot of care for community. Being able to have clean spaces and then spaces that are ready for art and installation and community feeling adds warmth to community and also embraces art forms that are visible to everyone who's walking, running, or enjoying community. So, you're part of community cohesion, people feeling safe and warm in their community and seeing art inspiration on their daily journey. So, thank you for that, and thank you for making our community a little bit better every single day.
Thank you. Commissioner Baca.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And thank you to the department for being here. I think this shows the strong partnership with Adams County and their cities for services that we offer. And I know you didn't bring up any of the data that you have, but the data improvements that you've seen in graffiti and addressing those over time is really astonishing. And it's really something that needs to be shared out publicly, and I think that it was on our internet site recently, along with the video. So, I really appreciate the partnership with Federal Heights and Brighton for graffiti removal. I think that it shows a sense of pride, you know, as you go out as a resident, and then if it's cleaned up, it's a sense of pride. And it just doesn't perpetuate additional abatements that need to occur in the area or additional vandalism that may come along with that. So, I think that, along with Commissioner Pinter said, it's a sense of safety as well and community. But I think the biggest thing is that it really is a sense of pride of our community, that the city, the county, they're paying attention to us, and they're addressing needs that we see on the ground as constituents and residents. So, thank you so much. And really, it looks, it's really exciting to see this partnership go forward.
Thank you. And I could tell you that the areas where we, we stay above and we address graffiti, we address cleanups, we address those things, are the ones that stay clean. And it's that whole broken window theory is a real thing. So, what you guys do is so important, and it's more than just the graffiti. It's how people feel about their home. So, thank you all very much. We appreciate it, and we welcome the partnership with Brighton.
Thank you.
Commissioners, if I could, I would just like to introduce Ryan Dodge, who is leading the effort, and David Halbert, who, together, they cleaned about 2,400 instances of graffiti last year. But Ryan's been integral in this effort. He, his goal is to eventually clean up the entire, you know, Western world here of graffiti. He does. He wants to expand. But David is, is one of the individuals that came through the program, and he's now a full-time staff member with Adams County. A phenomenal human, a phenomenal professional, and we're so excited that we're able to tap into his skillset.
Either of you want to make any comments?
I just want to say thank you to everybody that's supported the program from the expansion to the seasonal program. I had this crazy dream to expand, and that was less than a year ago, and now it's happening. And with the seasonal program, we're able to expand more and hire people. It's just an awesome opportunity, and I love just helping the community out.
Thank you. David, we saw you on the news, too.
Yeah, thank you. Just want to say thank you for the opportunity and just being here, and I appreciate my team for their support and their effort and keep pushing me, keep getting motivated and getting out there and doing what we need to do. Serve Adams County.
Well, thank you. And thank you both for your inspiration and all you do in our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. County manager, is that it for you? Oh, we need to vote on it, don't we? Yeah, I forgot about that. Thank you, Commissioner Tedesco. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve. I don't have a button, but I move to approve. The technology will catch up with this one these days.
We have a second. All right.
There we go.
And we have a second, and a motion, and a vote. As expected, unanimous.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, county attorney.
I do not have anything today. Thank you.
Really? Oh, wow. Okay. At this time, we will adjourn. Thank you all.